All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you all to this Region 12 Board of Education meeting, December 19, 2016. Rebecca, can you take attendance, please?
Anthony Amato, Valerie Anderson, Alan Brown, Gregory Kava. I'm here. Michelle Gora, James Hirschfield.
Here.
Stephanie Kolnick. Jennifer Pody. Lisa Rousch.
Here.
Michael Sinatra.
Here.
Peter Tagley.
All right, so Anthony, Valerie, and Alan, and Michelle are absent at this time, so we do have a quorum. All right, item two, Consent Agenda, which is our minutes of our business meeting of December 5, 2016, and the information, the field trip to the Metropolitan Museum of Art in New York on April 18, 2017. Is there anyone who wants to remove anything from the consent agenda? All right, not seeing anyone, then the consent agenda is approved. Report of the Chair. I wanted to bring to the Board's attention, for those who did not know, on April 8, 2016, Mr. Curtis Reed, the first electman of Bridgewater, filed a complaint with the Freedom of Information Commission against the Board of Education claiming that the Board held an improper executive session on March 21, 2016. A hearing was held on that at the Freedom of Information Commission in Hartford. The hearing was held on July 6, 2016. The Freedom of Information Commission released a proposed final decision dated November 16, 2016, in which it found, and I quote one of the paragraphs, "After weighing the credibility of the witnesses and consideration of all the evidence in the case, it has found that the discussion during the executive session concerned the performance of the superintendent, and accordingly, it has concluded that such discussion was permitted in executive session," and it cites the statute. "It is therefore concluded that the respondents did not violate the Freedom of Information Act as is alleged in the complaint, and therefore, the complaint was dismissed." And it was said that that proposed final decision would be considered at a hearing on December 7, 2016. It's my understanding that Mr. Reed did not attend that hearing, and so the final decision was confirmed, and so the Freedom of Information complaint by Mr. Reed was dismissed. I just wanted to bring that to the Board's attention. All right, Superintendent's report. Dr. Costino.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Hope everyone has a great holiday and enjoys some time off. We have an appointment of a new Assistant Power Professional at WPS, Stephanie Maynard. I do have, in front of you, Peter Prada's school enrollment report, which we get every year, so I know that the Board had asked for that, and not prepared really to discuss it tonight, but I did want to let you know that it is in, and the trends seem to be continuing. We did have, we have, I wish Val was here, but she couldn't make it, but we had a small committee of Mrs. Anderson, Ms. Pody, oh, you're here. You were at the meeting, weren't you, Jen, the public comment meeting? Yes. And, no, Karen Files, myself, and Mrs. Judd, and we had a long conversation about possible guidelines, not only for public comment, but just for Board strategies to make meetings run a little more smoother, which we'll go over in our next retreat, but the Board, our small group is recommending to the Board that we try this out, not tonight, starting in January, and basically, without reading the whole thing, it's, "The Board of Ed respectfully asks the public to adhere to the following. Speakers must approach the podium and microphone, state their name and the town in which they reside for the record. Two, each member of the public may speak one time for a maximum of three minutes, and they will be timed, and must conclude comments when the time is up. You may not borrow time from another member of the audience. And explaining the purpose of public comment is to hear various perspectives from our community. It is not a two-way dialogue. Board members will not answer questions or directly respond to your statement. Please do not take this as a personal affront, as it is protocol." And then reminding the community that our meetings are videotaped, they're aired on our Region 12 YouTube channel and Public Access Channel 194, and that community members and stakeholders are always encouraged, if they like to, to send letters and/or emails. So, we did a draft, I sent it, I'm hoping that we all agree that we can move forward with this for the next meeting in January, and that we will put it in our region review, we will have it posted, so that when people come, they understand, and for the first couple of meetings, we'll also put it on the agenda, that's posted in all the towns. So, I'm hoping, Mr. Chairman, that people are good with that. And then the only other thing is, I don't have one in front of me, but I want to just share, this is our First Annual Class of 2016 Report, and this gives a summary of the highlights of the class. Karen Files was our lead person, she's done a great job on this. This is in the mail, went to the post office today, so people will be getting it tomorrow or the next day. It really highlights all the wonderful things that are going on at Chapag. It also highlights the Class of 2016 acceptances and their plans. It also highlights some of our alum, and I'm very proud, the last page highlights a lot of the teachers who are also alum from Region 12. So, I think we did a great job, I want to thank Karen, and hopefully, we're going to get a lot of good feedback from this publication, and I look forward to everyone receiving it. And that is my report. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the Superintendent? Peter?
Yeah, I have somewhat a problem on this three-minute restriction on speaking. I would rather see it at the discretion of the Chairman, rather than starting putting up minimums, maximums times for people to speak. To me, it seems very restrictive. Normally, people don't speak for much more than three minutes or four minutes, but three minutes sounds very restrictive, in a sense, like we're steering it. That's how I feel personally. I think we could have a more accommodating aspect to of it, as I said, at the discretion of the Chair, I mean, you may have a three-minute maximum, but I would certainly like to see the Chair more involved in limiting speakers, if it goes beyond maybe what we're trying to do. Doesn't it sound very restrictive to you? Doesn't it sound insulting to some degree?
No, I don't think it sounds insulting. First of all, I will say, I was not part of the group that came up with this recommendation. It's my understanding, for as long as I've been involved in the Board, that three minutes has been the unwritten rule, and I will say that it may help, first of all, the Board's going to have to decide on this, it's not really on the agenda for our consideration tonight, but the Board will have to decide if it's something that it wants to do, but I will say, there are times where it's very difficult to control folks. You may ask them to stop, but they keep speaking, so the Board will have to weigh what it wants to do with it.
Yeah, just my feeling, it just sounds like, we're more accommodating than we are restrictive normally.
All right. Greg?
Yeah, I have a question for the Superintendent about the Prada report. Are we going to have a meeting devoted to this? Because, I mean, I looked through the report, I've looked at the report, and I don't necessarily agree with your conclusion that the trends are continuing. In fact, the elementary population is, the live births are projected to go up, the elementary population appears to be stabilizing when you get into the mid twenties, and actually comes back somewhat and then stabilizes. The middle school population tends to come back up and starting to stabilize by the end of the projections in here. The problem is, the high school is still suffering from the years earlier that are working their way through when the population had declined, so that the total number is not stabilizing or going up, but eventually, it will. If they were to project out another five years, the numbers that are in there would tend to stabilize and raise the population. So, I wondered if perhaps, you know, you were commenting on the total number, as opposed to what appears to be some good news, and that populations are rising and stabilizing.
No, I think you have it correctly. I was really, as I said, I didn't go through the whole report yet, but the bottom line is that our bottom number is still on the decline. We do see some pockets of increase, but it's going to take time for those increases to make it all the way up. I think some of the strategies we're using in the region are starting to attract families, so we're very excited about that, and certainly, we will definitely have more information on it. Bob Geeson usually is the one who really goes through with the fine-tooth comb, and he can give us a little more information, but we're happy to do that, and we're happy also to bring Mr. Prada here, he'd be happy to come if we wanted him to come and discuss it.
Thank you. Peter?
I called each town hall several months ago to find out what the birth rates were, and from 2012 to 2016, collectively, in all three towns, the average was 31 births collectively. Doesn't sound like much of an increase to me, and we're not going to get all those 31 students, so I'm not sure, when people make statements that the birth rates are rising, we're getting more kids in, well, the statistics don't show that. So, I mean, I think we have to be a little careful about making statements about things are rising, when if you look at the actual birth rates, I wouldn't say they're going down, but I wouldn't say they're certainly rising. 31 births collectively for the last four, five years, you know, is not a real booming number, I mean, but I think we'd have to see a lot more than that, so I think we have to be careful of, that's not counting, of course, people who may move in, but people also move out, so I would be certainly careful of just what kind of numbers we throw around when it comes to just the population going up, down, sideways, or whatever. I think we have to look at the real statistics, and the real statistics, I went and found out, so I think Greg has to be a little judicious.
Well, could I respond to that? Sure. I looked at the statistics, and yes, the population, it depends on what school you look at. For example, if you look at Booth, you'll see that for 17, and 18, and 19, the numbers are lower than they've been, a lot lower than they've been, but yet, they come up for 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27. The same thing at Washington Primary School, in fact, the increases are even more marked at Washington Primary School. Now, Burnham is still lagging. The births are, you know, are very low for 17, 18, they get bigger in 19, they drop in 20, they get bigger again in 21, but then they drop down for 23, 23, 4, 5, 6, and they stabilize at a relatively low number, but it's still higher than the worst years in their numbers. So, this looks to me like births, and again, they're projections, so we don't know what actually happens, but it looks to me like, overall, he is projecting the births to increase, after they decrease, they will increase and stabilize, and he's projecting the school populations will stabilize at some point. And so, again, I think that we could be pessimistic looking at this, but on the other hand, these are better numbers than we looked at several years ago, when we first started addressing this issue. The numbers look better going into the mid twenties than they looked like they were going to look, based on the projections, because the nadir seems to be the 17 to 20 range, that seems to be the low point, and they seem to be coming off the bottom. Could change, could go the other way, but what this, what I objected to was, I thought the way the Superintendent characterized it was not true to the report. It was true to the overall region numbers, but that's because the overall region numbers are working through a decline, and that if you look at the younger numbers, those are going up, and that's good news, because until those go up, the high school isn't going up, and those have to go up first, so that's the only thing I was trying to say.
All right, anything else on that, or for the Superintendent? Yes, Rebecca?
Thank you, Pat, to you and your team, this is a lovely report, I mean, obviously, I just got a chance to skim through it, but I thought there were a lot of nice takeaways in it, and I think it speaks well to our students and to Chapag.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Yes, Michael?
Just a question for Dr. Cosentino, and it may be in the report from Dr. Prada, but I'm not sure if it is. Do we have what, he's been doing this for how many years for us now?
Oh, I don't know how many, but-
Like, a long time.
I've been here, and I'm sure, longer than that.
It would be interesting for us to see what his projections were on a year-by-year basis, and then what the actual numbers were, because I think if we're looking at, you know, our confidence in his data, you know, how many times was he right, and maybe what trends recently we can see, you know, has he consistently been over-reporting, under-reporting, been exactly accurate from year to year? It'd be interesting to know.
I will just remind the Board that we did contact McBroom and Malone to see if they wanted to come and do a population study, enrollment study, and they reviewed Peter Prada's work, and said that what he is giving us as a region is as accurate as they could do, and that they really worked with much larger districts, and that they felt that, you know, he was right in the ballpark. But we certainly can look at that and see the actuals versus the projected, and go back 10 or 15 years, so we'll work on that.
On page 18, is that what you're talking about, Michael? He shows us what his projection was for each year, and then the bar graph is better. There's that one anomaly of 2006, and these are altered, and the others-
Yeah, for me, this is, maybe just me, this is kind of a hard graph to read. I'd love to see that for, you know, each year, projected, actual, projected, actual.
It's a bar graph.
Right, maybe a bar graph, rather than-
Sure.
Because the lines are so close together that it's very difficult to really see.
Yeah, I think if you read the text around it, it sort of describes, you know, he gives you a percentage of, you know, he says the projection was low by 4 percent, a lot of that's in the text, but I see what you're saying.
Wouldn't that be that hard to do? All right, anyone, anything else for the Superintendent?
That's my report, and then DeBrito is going to continue.
I understand. Is there anything else for the Superintendent? All right, thank you. All right, number five, then, Burnham School, K-2 configuration. Teresa DeBrito, Kathy Kalella, Linda Sloan, Amy Stiles, Kristin D'Souza. Welcome, ladies.
Not sure, is this on? Oh, doesn't sound like it's on. Okay, let's see if I can move it. There we go. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we will present on a proposal of a K-2 configuration. You will hear from our consultant, Linda Sloan, who has had over 40 years of experience in teaching and curriculum development, and 23 years of experience at Lee H. Kellogg School in a K-2 setting in Falls Village. She not only has a degree in education, but also has one in counseling. You will certainly experience her passion as she presents to you. Following Linda's presentation, you'll hear from one of Burnham's teachers, Amy Stiles, our Grade 2 teacher. Unfortunately, due to Kristin D'Souza's baby's illness, she is unable to be here with us tonight. As you know, Kristin is presently our Wonder Garden K-1 teacher. Amy will share the work we have done with scheduling, which includes common planning periods, and what a day would look like, highlighting specific learning targets for each grade level. Lastly, Teresa DeBrito will wrap up our presentation. I feel it important to give a little history, as we now have some new members among the Board of Education. We began our journey about four years ago, searching where multiple grade configurations were in action. We found at that time nine districts in eight towns, some that are small in size, similar to our school in our district, and a couple magnet schools, and one district, Lebanon, chose, due to the demands of Common Core, to cease multiple grade configurations and resume a more traditional setting. We visited a large number of the schools. At that time, Teresa DeBrito also provided the Board of Education with her research findings before our implementation of the K-1 configuration. Last spring, Dr. Cosentino arranged for a group of parents, board members, and staff to attend a one-day session with Dr. Stone, a retired professor. She also purchased Dr. Stone's book for each attendee. However, we recognized her work didn't match our needs. After our initial exploration, we have continued to make multiple visits to some of the schools that are similar in size and makeup, such as Warren and Falls Village. Our work continues, and we have found Linda Sloan and Falls Village to be a very good fit for us. As you know, our K-1 class is now in its third year. Kristin D'Souza has done a remarkable job in planning for two grade levels. She is supported in her classroom with a highly effective support member, Michelle Sagerson. Michelle is a Region 12 retired teacher from Booth Free School, who effectively supports instruction in that classroom. It is hard work, and Kristin does the work of two teachers, planning the instruction of two grade levels. I certainly want to recognize her for that. Lastly, I do thank, as well as our team, thank the Board of Ed for giving us this year to further explore what is most appropriate for our Burnham School community. I also want to thank you for allowing all the constituents to be a part of this process. That would include the staff, and we've worked really hard, looking at all the different configurations, as well as all the research, administration, the parents, and the community. We feel that our proposal will strengthen our school community and become a showcase for others. So, at this time, I'd like Linda to come on up.
Good evening, everybody. I think this is working at my height, let's adjust this a little bit. I got involved with Burnham School this fall on account of my background, which involves many years of successfully co-teaching a K-2 class at the Lee Kellogg School, the smallest school in Region 1. I am here to speak about the efficacy and potential of combined grade classes, and to speak in support of the proposed K-2 class at Burnham for the 2017-2018 school year. Just some personal background, I grew up in a very large New Jersey suburb just outside of New York City. The town had six elementary schools, and I went to the smallest one, the K-5 school that just had one class per grade, despite it being the 50s, when there was no shortage of school-aged children. I was with the same children each year, and felt a strong sense of connection, community, and loyalty to my neighborhood school. The parents were equally protective and loyal, and worked hard to push back against the yearly talk of redrawing school district lines and consolidation. This should all sound a little bit familiar. Early on, small schools became a big part of my DNA. Fast forward to my professional life as a teacher, and my affinity for smaller schools continued. Most of my teaching career was spent teaching in smaller, to very small schools that valued a strong sense of community. The last 30 years of my career were spent teaching just down the road at the Lee Kellogg School in Falls Village, one of the smallest K-8 state's schools in the state, and it may, in fact, have the distinction of being the smallest school in the state. I fell in love with Lee Kellogg when I was doing some consulting in the kindergarten classroom in my job as a school psychologist for Region 1. The size and its spirit drew me in the first time I walked through the door. It felt like coming home, and since the kindergarten teacher was retiring at year's end, I applied for the job, and the rest is history. So, both my personal and professional journeys have created a few clear biases, beliefs, and passions over time. I love small schools, and recognize their importance to the towns they serve. I understand why people are fiercely protective of them, especially in this time of dropping enrollments. I also believe combined grade classrooms are a viable and strategic way to deal with these enrollment issues. I am a strong believer in a K-2 class configuration. I loved working with children and their families over three years, and believed that the children in my program were provided with a stimulating and rigorous Common Core-aligned curriculum that allowed them to thrive both intellectually and socially at their level of development because of this configuration, not in spite of it. I also love team teaching, and all of the stimulation and collaboration I enjoyed with my co-teacher. Teaming made us better, more effective teachers. I also believe and understand that change can be hard. It is a process and not an event, and that as schools look for ways to address dropping enrollments, the process of adapting to this new reality needs to be valued and respected. The Kellogg K-2 classroom actually did not begin as a response to an enrollment issue. It began for philosophical reasons and a strong desire to smooth out the transitions for young learners from year to year, but this proposed change still got a lot of pushback, especially from parents. We had many parent meetings before the Board of Education eventually voted to approve the move. Interestingly enough, about 14 years in, a new principal came to Kellogg and decided to pull kindergarten out of K-2. When she announced her intention, there was as much pushback, and maybe even more, at the thought of changing the K-2 configuration. It was an institution by then. Then, four years ago, when the current principal came on board, she put kindergarten back into the mix, and there were many parents of incoming kindergarteners who were not in favor of this move. In fact, one of them came to the latest Burnham parent meeting, and shared with everyone how she and her husband put their house on the market, because they were so opposed to a K-2 class. She also shared how her thinking changed over time, and how she eventually turned into a strong K-2 supporter. She had actually hoped to be here tonight, but due to a work conflict and illness, she was not able to attend. All of the above serves as a strong reminder that adjusting to change is a process, and that at times, the thing we think we like the least can end up being something we come to appreciate and value over time. So, now, why the recommendation of a K-2 class at Burnham? Before I talk about this, I want to say how much I have enjoyed my work with Burnham. The school is a very inviting place, there is a terrific staff, and they have all been welcoming and genuinely excited about thinking about strategic ways to handle the enrollment issues at the school. It is easy to see that the school already has many structures in place to support a smooth and successful transition to the proposed K-2 classroom. Already, Burnham has a very successful and effective K-1 program, thanks to the hard work and talent of Kristin D'Souza, and she will continue as one of the anchors of the K-2 class. So, adding second grade to this configuration will be a natural extension of the success of this existing program. Educational research on the cognitive development of children by Piaget also supports the K-2 configuration. Piaget's theory of cognitive development states that children progress through distinct stages of cognitive development, and make meaning through active and meaningful experiences. Children in kindergarten through second grade learn in a similar way, and are in cognitively compatible stages. This grade combination is a natural fit. Burnham already has a strong culture of collaboration across grade levels, school meetings, book buddies, lunch, and recess. The research of the educational researcher, Vygotsky, is very much in play at the school. Vygotsky's Zone of Proximal Development, one of his signature ideas about how people learn, states that the difference between what a learner can do without help, and what he or she can do with help, plays a dynamic role in learning. Part of the reason why cross-grade mixing works as well as it does is because of this idea. Older children model more sophisticated approaches to problem-solving, and younger children are able to accomplish tasks they could not do without this assistance and modeling. When I first met Kristin, she talked about the importance and success of this dynamic in her K-1 class. A K-2 class will further support and extend this powerful dynamic. The school has worked very hard to be respectful of the idea that change is a process and not an event. They have engaged in a very transparent process of exploring K-2 as an option, by hiring me, involving teachers in the development of this proposal, and engaging parents in the process in a variety of ways. Burnham's staff has already begun the work of envisioning what a K-2 classroom would look like, what a schedule and a typical day might look like, and how curric- look like, what a schedule and a typical day might look like, and how curriculum for each grade might be taught. Their enthusiasm has been evident. The school has also been providing informational programs for parents and other stakeholders. Research shows that when the various stakeholders are provided with many opportunities to be involved and educated prior to a new initiative being put into place, this new initiative stands a greater chance of success. Burnham prizes its reputation as a high-functioning and achieving school, and rightly so. The research on combined grade classes shows that achievement is the same as or better than the academic achievement of children in same-age classrooms. Students in multi-age classrooms also tend to have significantly more positive attitudes towards school, themselves, and others, due to how these classrooms foster strong peer relationships and many opportunities for developing leadership skills over time. A K-2 class will maintain the high academic standards and results typical of Burnham. Burnham will have two highly regarded teachers at the helm of the proposed K-2 class, who are very excited to be working together, Kristin and Amy Styles. Together, they have a strong command of the needs of the primary learner, and they both are eager to work together. The research on multi-age supports the use of team teaching in these classrooms, and teaming works best when the partners have a hand in choosing their partners. The power in teaming cannot be underestimated. The teachers can share the planning, and having a team of teachers increases the flexibility for using a variety of instructional strategies, from small group to whole group to one-on-one instruction. Teaming also allows for the flexibility needed to teach state standards to a single grade and provide for multi-grade opportunities for instruction by combining K-1 to teaching standards where appropriate. Recent research also indicates that when teachers have regular and more frequent opportunities to collaborate, this collaboration stimulates a higher degree of professional reflection and, in the end, better teaching. It is also worth noting that beyond single-grade or multi-grade configurations, research shows that the single most important factor that leads to a positive effect on student achievement is a knowledgeable, skillful, and highly effective teacher at the helm. Burnham will have two highly effective teachers and the support of another well-loved and highly effective teacher as part of the mix. The children in this class will have a lock on high-quality instruction for three years during a time when many foundational skills are being taught. This bodes well for the future success of the proposed K-2 class. Finally, from everything I have seen, Burnham gets things right. It is intentional and thoughtful about all it does. Implementing a team-taught K-2 classroom will be no exception. It will create another positive opportunity, among many, to be responsive to the needs of its students and the school community in keeping with its tradition of delivering a high-quality educational experience for all of its students.
Thank you.
Now, at this time, Amy is going to share a schedule, uh, two schedules that she has put together. One schedule is a weekly schedule showing you that there are some common planning periods that were put together, because it's so important for the two teachers to plan. They need to have common planning periods as well as separate planning periods, because there's individual curriculum that's being taught, as well as collaborative pieces. And then the second piece that she's going to share is just a typical day. So she really wanted you to see that there are learning targets for each grade level, which is critical. So I'm going to pass those out, and she's going to talk about those.
Hello, it's nice to be here tonight. My name is Amy Styles, and I've been a second-grade teacher at Burnham School for the past 13 years, and I started at Booth Free as a literacy tutor in 2002. So I really have a love for Burnham. What, what I'm going to share with you right now is a schedule that Kristin and I put together when we tried to wrap our head around, like, what a typical week would look like, what a typical day. And there are times that our, we have a K-2 community time, getting started in the morning, our morning meetings. We would also work on Word study together. That is where the kids, the students are doing different Word study activities, and that could be multi-age, and we would all work together in one, in one classroom. You'll see that in the blue areas, there's common planning time. Kathy had given us schedules to look at, and we have, I believe, four, or three half-hour blocks a week and another hour block of week to work together and collaborate on different activities we would be doing and planning. Reading workshop will be done separately with a K setting and then a 1-2 setting, but still having learning targets for each grade. The same with writing. And math will be taught separately, K, 1, and then 2. And that's where we can really utilize Michelle, that she can help us with, you know, not planning, but teaching different groups. And here, you also see that K will get special center time, learning centers that, that will help foster their, you know, the orally development. And we have talked about STEM, which Mary Ann Zoller would help teach this year with us, or she teaches this year, but we would each take a session, a K session, a 1 session, and a 2 session. And then finally, theme, which would be more social studies-based, that was where we would all come together and have differentiated lessons, but our second-grade students would become leaders as they learn about the community and different aspects of our curriculum. But that would, again, all be together. And our, there's a white sheet that was also passed out. Yeah. That's really just to show you what a typical day would look like, that we would all meet for morning meeting together, and that's where we have our greeting, a share, a morning message, and an activity, and that just gets our community going. Then, again, we would go into Word study, and that would all be together. But we would have all of our teachers in multiple different groups. Reading workshop, again, we would have learning targets for kindergarten, first grade and second grade, but we would generally have kindergarten in one room and first and second grader, first and second grade in another room. Again, the same with writing workshop. We would have K would be in one room, and first and second grade would be in another room with various learning targets. Number Connor is another portion of math, and it's worked really well where K and 1 have a certain, the certain math number Connor together, and then second grade would have their number Connor separately. And then finally, math, we would have, would be separate for all grades, but two grades would be in one room, and then we have different learning targets. And again, it just shows how we are having students work together collaboratively, but also we are keeping in mind that each grade needs their own learning target, and, and also shows that we do have common planning time, which will certainly be needed for this exciting adventure that Kristin and I are really looking forward to doing next year.
Thank you.
Kathy began by taking us back several years when we first started to research the K-1 configuration, and I'm going to revisit what happened in the summer and bring you up to date today. So Linda Sloan actually reached out to Dr. Cosentino and wanted to offer her expertise and her assistance, because she had read about our decreased enrollment and our desire to have more children in our learning environments. And after that, we began our meetings with Linda. They began in August. We met Kathy and I with Linda. We developed a plan. We met with teachers. Teachers went out to visit Kellogg School, and Linda was always there to greet us, which we definitely appreciated, since she's retired already, but we appreciated her also being there. We also met with the facilities director, Dr., Dr., I'm already making you Dr. O'Larry, Mr. O'Larry, because we needed to have the adjoining classrooms for the setup, and we talked about having a walkway between the two classrooms, because right now it's a solid wall. So we definitely strategized on how we can do that, so that the two classrooms would be identical. The way the kids put their belongings away, the desks, the chairs, everything would be identical in the two classroom settings. But we needed that space in order to really provide the learning environment for the three grade levels. In addition, we met with parents. We did go to a first meeting the PTO had in October and presented what we were exploring for K-2. There weren't that many families there, so we really felt compelled to reach out further. We did send letters to all pre-K through 5th grade families residing in Bridgewater. We also put together a very simple survey that went out to all the families, just asking, what are your concerns? What additional questions do you have? Anything else that you'd like us to touch upon? And we used those results to really hear their voices and prepare for a follow-up meeting, which took place on, excuse me, on December 1st. The PTO did provide babysitting. They really orchestrated an evening, hoping to facilitate the opportunity for families to come and hear more about the K-2 configuration, and we honestly and delicately addressed all their concerns. And you may recall some of those specific concerns. We could definitely see it in their faces at the meeting. There was a fear that students would be, that this would be an experiment, that they would be guinea pigs, or words that were used, that we would not be able to really meet their child's needs, whether they were a struggling learner or a high-achieving student. And we took every single concern and fortified for them that our teachers definitely are committed to enriching the learning opportunity for all kids and meeting them where they're at. And the collaboration time is critical for that. We also shared with parents that now they'll have two sets of eyes on every child, that when the teachers will communicate with families, that both teachers will communicate. It's not like one teacher's going to be responsible for some kids and another teacher responsible for another, a group of students, that this is truly a community of learners. We also shared that there is a commitment to this K-2 configuration, that we are not looking at future enrollment to decide to back off, that we really have invested the time to plan a wonderful experience for our students, and we wanted to make sure that parents understood that. So we assure them that we heard their voices, we heard their concerns, and we hoped that they also understood that we really did go through a lot of time to develop a learning environment that they would be proud of and happy to have their child in. So I also want to share with you that it was recommended that we go and visit the Montessori School. So I did reach out, and as soon as we returned from break, we were also going to go and visit Washington Montessori, because they have a similar setup with multi-grade students in the same classroom. In addition, I do want to leave you with one very important piece of information, and I did share this with families. And what I shared is that as a teacher myself and as a parent, that I experienced what in education we call looping. And when you loop, that means that the students will stay with the same teachers for multiple years. And the fact that these students would have three years with the same teachers really does reduce that level of anxiety at the start of a school year, getting to know a new adult, getting to know what the expectations are, and that really could add significant number of weeks to the overall educational experience for the three years. And I experienced that as a teacher myself and as a parent, and so I definitely support that type of instruction where we're able to loop. And I'm happy to say that we are looking to have a healthy class size of over 20 students next year. So I hope that this has been informational, and if you have questions, we are certainly here to answer any of your questions.
But last year, Alan Brown made the comment that, why not do K-1, 2 in Booth or Burnham and 3, 4, 5 in Roxbury or Burnham? And my answer to that is that was a very positive suggestion. You come before us tonight and talk about K-1, 2 in only one building. It seems to me that what we should have been directing you to is, as a board, directing you to look at K-1, 2 as a total grade of both Booth and Burnham, and 3, 4, 5 as a total grade of, in either Booth or Burnham. So while this is a good idea, and I don't disagree with it, I would do it in one building, but I'd include the students from both Booth and Burnham.
Peter, if I may, the board didn't, the board, I think, considered that, the board did not direct them to do that. This is what their presentation is. Can we stick with what the presentation is? I understand your, I understand your opinion, but they've made a presentation. Why don't we ask them about that instead of asking about something they didn't do? The board did not ask them to make that presentation.
I can elaborate a little bit. If, our understanding is that the regionalization plan indicates that there's a K-5 school in each of the three towns, and so it wouldn't have been appropriate for us to sort of determine to merge schools. That would have been something that I believe would require a referendum.
Well, on that issue, I would say I do, I don't disagree with what's been presented.
I'm sorry, Peter, what?
I don't disagree. I would certainly support what the staff presented, but I have other agendas related to it.
I understand that. Alan?
Just because you pinned it on me. I'd just like to say that having been part of one of the meetings and learned about this over the course of an evening, I have since rescinded, rescinded my desire for a K-2, 3, 4, any split, not because I felt that the regional, regional plan was unsurmountable, but because it really does, we're talking about viability of class sizes, we're also talking about viability of school sizes, and it's still, even doing that, would end up with not changing the school size and the numbers of adults in the building for the schools. It would simply just shift small populations around with a great deal of busing and, and inter-town complication involved, too. So even though that was one of the ideas that you may remember that I put forward, I, I am now of the belief that this is a much better idea.
Michelle?
Well, I want to thank you all, because it sounds like you've spent a lot of time, this is a very thorough investigation, and you've all worked together very hard on it, and it sounds like a K-1, 2 classroom would, would work really well, and I think that's great. I just have a couple of questions about size and at what point is it too large for a K-1, 2? Is that, is it different being a K-1, 2 than it is just being, for example, a K or a 1 or a 2, you know, because of the multiple things going on? So that's one question. I was also wondering if you looked at what's going on in 3, 4, and 5? I know we have a really small 3rd grade going through, so I think, just wondering what the plan is for that.
Sure, glad you brought that up, because we also had indicated that in the letter to parents, that we have started to plan for 3, 4 for next year, the 3, 4 grade-level teachers. Isabel Bray and Jacqueline Collintine have also gone out to visit Kellogg, and we will be doing some experiences where both of those grades are together, but they have asked for, you know, additional time to really fortify what that would look like in the long term. But we definitely have already started that and shared that, so thank you for bringing that up.
Okay. I was also wondering, in the, what is it, the Kellogg? Kellogg Lee School? Lee Kellogg? Okay, thank you. What kind of numbers you have in those different classrooms and the staffing? You know, how many teachers, how many assistants, paras, what, you know, how does that?
Do you need her up here?
And K-1, 2 varies quite a bit. I mean, it's really luck of the draw. We only have one class per grade. So there's years where we've had kindergartens of three children, and we've had years where we've had 10 or 11 or 12. And I think our overall numbers for the past probably eight or nine years have been 20, 22, 23 total. There was a time in K-1, 2's history where we actually had 50-plus students in our class. And the way we handled that, with our principal just hired a number of really strong paraprofessionals to come in and support us to make that happen. That was just a bubble that went through the school for a couple of years. Since, it's really leveled off, yep.
So you ran one?
We had a K-1, 2. It was team taught.
With 50?
Yep.
Instead of two 25s?
Yep, because of the way this Board of Ed was committed to the teaching staff that it had. And they were willing to hire paraprofessionals, knowing that the bubble wasn't going to last for a long time. So we did get through that, and it's leveled off. And I'd say it's typical now, 20 with two teachers plus a paraprofessional that's in there half of the day. And then other resources. We have a Title I teacher who sometimes comes in and supports kids in class, special education as well, so.
Okay, so two teachers, 20 to 23?
So the ratio is generally, I would say, 10 to 1, 11 to 1. So it's a sort of typical of what a lot of grades are. In Region 1, that's sort of a typical ratio of teacher to student. So we were very much on par with what was common within Region 1.
And then, what did the students do then as they matriculate through the school? Like, what's the configuration?
Right. For a while, they would go to a leveled-out 3rd grade. But Kellogg has also been dealing with enrollment issues. And when that class of three came along, or four, and sending them off to 3rd grade and only having four children in that class really didn't feel right, the school and our new principal, she really moved to a 3, 4. And so that's been in existence now and works very well. And that class, I think, has 17 children in it, so. And then we have a 5, 6, where they do a lot of combining, and 7, 8 as well. Multi-age is really used throughout the school now as a way to deal with a small size.
Well, it would make sense after three years of being in a multi-age. It would probably feel really odd going back to being a single age.
Definitely. And I think they missed when they went to that 3rd grade, and it was a much smaller environment. I think they also felt socially it was much better for the kids to have a broader group of kids to choose from. So that definitely helped make that decision, for sure.
Thank you.
Michael?
To some extent, this is a follow-up on Michelle Gora's question to you. Now that you've had a number of years focusing on a K-1 model, and then now the proposed K-1, 2 model, I'm wondering if this, based on some of the comments that you've made, is something that we should be looking at, not only at Burnham, but at our other two elementary schools as well? And what you've learned from the process at Burnham that you would recommend if we did roll it out to Washington Primary or roll it out to Booth Free, what that would look like, lessons learned?
I think, Kathy, do you want to speak a little bit to that? Knowing, I mean, my mission really was with Burnham, and so I don't know the other schools as well. I mean, I think it was probably pretty clear from my proposal that I'm a strong advocate of a K-2 class, that I really love that work, and I think our kids did extremely well in that model. But I think probably Kathy can speak better to the specifics of Region 6 or Teresa.
I think why we liked Falls Village so much is it's very similar to our school. I mean, they have a K through 8 and only 77 students. So when you compare that with our numbers, it's very similar. Our hope is that if we do this right and we do it thoughtfully, that it becomes a showcase. That's why we're so focused on the K through 2, getting it right, making it a showcase for others. And as we tiptoe into the 3, 4 next year, and then really strengthen that all of next year, we hope that other buildings might like what we're doing and may take it on. It doesn't mean that, we like to call it a configuration instead of multi-grade, multi-age, because it is a combination of both, because we know how important it is to teach the curriculum at each grade level, especially with Common Core. And that's difficult to do. That's why you need more bodies in those rooms. But for us, we think that that's going to work, and we're really excited about it. And Booth may be the next place that wants to try it. But we want to prove that it's effective, that our kids are doing well, and we are committed to that. So maybe down the line, I don't know, we don't have crystal balls, right? So we'll see what happens as we move forward.
Yes?
The only thing I'd like to add to that, that's okay, is that we know the process thus far. So we'll have much more information after Year 1, after Year 2, after Year 3. I don't want to anticipate what that would look like. I really want to be authentic in our experiences, because I would love to come back and tell you exactly how it's going and how it's progressing. And then you'll see, based on, you know, the teacher input and parent input, all of that is really, really important. And like Kathy said, we don't have that crystal ball. So we definitely are looking forward to this learning experience.
Definitely.
I just wanted to say thank you to the four ladies who got up and spoke today. I think it sounds like you've really done your research. Very lovely introductions and speeches about your experience and the research that went into this. I can't help but draw a couple of parallels, just saying that I'm the parent of a 3-year-old who's in the REACH program right now and is in a multi-age kind of classroom. And I was very nervous about putting her into that. We thought as a 3-year-old with 5-year-olds, what's that going to look like? She's thriving, absolutely loved it. I'm becoming a convert into that multi-age kind of classroom. She's a little bit of a leader for some kids, and also learning certainly from some of the older children. So it sounds like there's a lot of research behind this. I like, you know, where you're going with it. I am, I had a couple of questions, like Michelle had, about that current class that's going to be in 3rd grade with such a few number of students, but it sounds like you're already thinking about what that's going to look like. So I'm interested to see that report and interested to see how your visit to the Montessori school goes after the holidays. But thanks again. I, you know, speaking a lot to what I'm thinking about, and I'm sure a lot of other parents of young children are thinking about. So thanks for putting this together.
All right. Teresa, I have a couple of questions, either for you or for Kathy. Can you tell me the current enrollment numbers for the Burnham School in kindergarten?
I think there are three currently in kindergarten, three children. Okay, she's got it.
Yeah, I have it. So presently, we have three kindergarteners, we have eight 1st graders, five 2nd graders, seven 3rd graders, 10 4th graders, and 14 5th graders.
Okay, so.
That's a total of 47.
All right. But currently in K-1, 2, we have 15, am I correct?
No, currently in K-1, we have 11.
No, no, I'm sorry. In K-1, 2 currently?
Okay, 15.
16, okay.
Yeah, sorry.
And I thought you said, Teresa, before, that you thought that this coming year in K-1, 2, you'd have 20 students, is that right?
Yes. Yeah, we have some.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. What did you say, Teresa?
There's a minimum of 10 incoming kindergarteners.
There are?
Yes.
Okay.
Viable little children.
I'm sorry? I can't?
Viable little children, they do exist.
All right, so you've got 10 incoming kindergarteners. All right, and I think that Linda said that you were talking about having two teachers and then the assistance of a third teacher. Is that an FTE or is that a paraprofessional?
No, presently, a paraprofessional.
Is that a full-time paraprofessional?
I, just slightly below full-time, yes. She's there most of the day.
So two teachers and a full-time paraprofessional for 20 students? Is that what you're proposing?
Yes.
Okay. And then 3rd grade has currently 3, and 4th grade is 10. And I thought you said you were...
3rd grade currently has 7.
7, I'm sorry. And 4th grade has 10?
Correct.
I understand. And when you said that you're starting to plan for next year for the 3, 4, does that mean a proposal for the fall of 2017 or the fall of 2018?
Well, we're going to begin to do some collaborative work next year, this coming September. So there'll be some pieces that we'll put into play, and then there'll be others that aren't quite there. We have to look at curriculum. Curriculum is huge. And so combining some of the curriculum just doesn't work. And so we need to look to see where we can do that.
Okay. All right, thank you. Anyone else? Rebecca?
I also would like to thank you, ladies, for all of this hard work. I feel a lot more educated about this process, and I feel more comfortable with it than I did a number of months ago. A question, you guys were sort of alluding to, is there like a cognitive breakpoint at 2nd grade? Like, just logically in terms of how we're grouping the kids, why we're looking at a K-2 configuration? Could you maybe kind of enlighten me a little bit about that?
Yes, when we looked at the standards and what's expected of children, K-2 is much more aligned. Based on the standards, students still receive adult support through 2nd grade. There is a significant shift in 3rd grade at the level of independence required for students to demonstrate their learning. Yes?
Anyone else? I'm just looking at the numbers. So if the current enrollment is kindergarten 3, 1st grade 8, and they move up, that's 11. And you said that you're expecting 10 incoming children for kindergarten? That's 21. I thought, I heard somebody say before that the ratio of teachers to students is 10 to 1 or 11 to 1. And so is it still your proposal that this group of 20 should have two full-time teachers and a full-time paraprofessional?
Absolutely.
And why is that?
That Linda was referencing that, because the two full-time teachers are the full-time teachers. So if you have 20 students, that's a ratio of 10 to 1.
And a full-time paraprofessional?
Right. That's an assistant.
Okay. Anyone else? I do want to thank you for your work, ladies. Appreciate it very much. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, Item 6, Opportunity for the Public to Comment on Agenda Items. Is there anyone who'd like to address the board? Yes, ma'am.
Hello, everyone.
Hello?
It's been a long time. Carolyn Dwyer from Bridgewater. I am the Burnham School PTO president, and I also do marketing for the town of Bridgewater. In April of 2014, our region affirmed our commitment to our hometown elementary schools. Last year, there was an attempt to merge Grades 2 and 3 at Burnham Elementary. The board voted to wait a year to allow more time for a thorough educational presentation and work to address the huge amount of parent outrage that stemmed from that particular proposal. We thank you for that time. In the big picture, we need to make sure we continue to keep our schools not only open, but attractive and innovative. What we know from the research, when we look to do any kind of merging, new configurations or looping, are a few points. And some of them you've heard this evening. Number 1, that the grades you choose to loop make educational sense from the curriculum and state standards, as well as children's developmental milestones. Merging Grades 2 and 3, by all accounts, was a disastrous concept. We are pleased the principal and her teachers have come up with a more educationally sound and innovative concept. They have researched it, planned for it, and seen it implemented elsewhere with success. Number 2, that it is key to properly and adequately staff such a configuration and allow those teachers adequate planning time. During parent and PTO meetings this fall, we were presented with a staffing plan and assured adequate planning time for our teachers. Number 3, that parents supported the idea, as if they do not, research shows it is destined to fail, and that their buy-in, cooperation, and support is paramount in this process. We are cautiously optimistic that the enthusiasm and preparation we have seen by the principal, teachers, consultant, and curriculum director will enable a well-planned and executed concept to roll out for Fall 2017. Number 4, that the safety and quality education must be our guides. We are now at bare-bones staffing with recent cuts in the past few years. Thus far, we have seen a process that is transparent and thorough. We would like to thank Teresa and Kathy for that. They, along with the teachers, understand the need to separate the students during key academic topics such as math. They are excited to build on the current socialization and small-community feel our school has built its reputation on, and this will allow for additional socialization and teamwork. We ask that this new program be monitored and adjusted as needed. If all the gains being touted fail to materialize, the onus is on the region to fix it or undo it. We ask for assistance marketing this new concept. We at the town and PTO level will work to create a positive cohesive message. We will continue to collaborate and emphasize our community feel. Your assistance in helping us reach outside this region to our targeted audience, like those who are disgruntled with larger class sizes in neighboring towns or those in a Montessori setting, is critical. It is worth mentioning that next year, we have nine Burnham students entering the K-class from REACH, and we believe that there are 1 to 3 more possibles bringing us to a hopeful 12. We also have a kindergarten child who is planning to use our Tuition-In program from New Milford. As we've mentioned, as we've come before you in the past, these initiatives will take time, and they continue to do so. We continue to receive inquiry calls about our offerings. We will renew this push in the new year to prepare for this fall. As this concept has been discussed as a potential beacon and showcase for the region, we look forward to seeing it replicated. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Reed?
Good evening. Last Tuesday, I met with Kathy Calella and Teresa DeBrito and our able board members, and I thank you for your service, everybody. And we discussed this plan on the K-1, K-2. And I did feel comfortable with this idea, and I think it is a way to address the enrollment issues. And I think we have a very good consultant here in Linda Sloan, from what I've heard. And I think it was very positive, the meeting, and, you know, the studies had been done, and we all had questions, and it worked out very well. My hope in the long run would be, if this is successful, that you would want to roll it out to the other schools also. And I think that's fair across the board. And I imagine that will take a year, maybe two, and you'll see that adjustment. When you combine further classes, 3, 4, 4, 5, I also would hope that you would look at sharing with Booth and Burnham, trading kids, they've moved around before. That's a way to address those cognitive differences and maybe a cheaper way to go and encourage kids to know each other across the region before they come to high school. And so that's something that I would hope would work out. And I know you have to knock a hole in the wall at Burnham and make it work. And I would also hope that you would have three teacher combinations with the two teachers and a para. para for three grades of kids. And, you know, I know this model works in other places, like Montessori. And, you know, my wife used to teach there. And so, anyway, I think it's, it's something that is worth going into, and I hope the parents, whoever's here, would buy into it. I know it can work very well. And I think that year that was afforded by the Board was a wise choice. And anyway, I, I look forward to supporting that. On another quick note, I know before I got here, you addressed that the FOI was dismissed. And hopefully, my FOI letter had some effect on the operations of the Board, and that you would reply promptly in the future for concerns. And if in discussions of goals, you end up talking about people and unfounded things that were said, that you would ask the people to come and talk to you. And you didn't do that, and I felt like that was improper, and you should, you know, get it from the horse's mouth before discussions about hacking emails, or, you know, using, writing under my name, and that kind of thing. Could have all been avoided, and the legal costs could have been avoided if you'd acted quickly. So my interest is really the best education of the kids in our region, and that all aspects of that delivery are open, fair, and worthy of mutual respect and discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
John Boniuto, Washington. And I'd like to speak to 4.4, public comment. And it's kind of nice to have the public comment after most of the agenda items tonight, because we do get to speak to what's on the agenda without, you know, now that we've heard, you know, some of the, some of the things that went on. And if we have to comment before the agenda items, it's kind of difficult to do that, because we have, we really don't have much knowledge of what's going to transpire. I would also like to remind the Board of Ed that we, the people here who are commenting, are the taxpayers who make all of this happen. We pay for the, the, the taxes, pay for the facilities, the teachers, the administrators, even this venue where the Board of Ed meeting is. So I think to limit or restrict public comment is, is kind of like an insult, as Peter was saying. It's an insult to people who have strong opinions, and who want to work with, you know, the Board of Ed to make this a better school system. And three minutes works both ways. Just as the policy set for the video recording, I wasn't out to, to spook anybody, or, or cause any problems. I, I simply did videotaping, because oftentimes during the summer, there were no videotaping happening. So, you know, if, if you want people, to limit people to three minutes because you don't want to hear what they're saying, then, I mean, I've been at meetings where you let people go on and on, who sort of speak to what you want to hear, and there's no problem. I've also heard comments at board meetings between board members about publishing, their husband publishing books, and their, their daughters publishing books, that has nothing to do with, with the, with the business at hand. And I just don't know what you're afraid of by, by, you know, even trying to set limits on. I, I understand that sometimes it.
Is your position there should be no limit on public?
No, I'm not saying no limit. I'm saying if people are making some, you know, positive comments, and, and raise definite concerns, I, I would say that, like, sometimes it is hard, you know, even Curtis, for him to say what he said tonight, it was impossible for him to say all that in three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, not hearing anyone. Thank you all. Yes, Peter.
Can you move to comment from the public to where it is tonight? Is that going to be all in the future, or was it just for this evening?
Well, we did it, I did it for tonight, because I wanted anyone who was interested in commenting on the K-2 configuration to hear the presentation first, before they had, you know, a chance to comment. So that's why I did, I did that.
So should we leave it to your discretion? I mean, does the Board want to leave it?
Yes.
Your discretion is fine with me. I have no problems.
All right. Item 7, we added this, action items is to follow up on things that were brought up at previous meetings. And at the last meeting regarding our policy on personal leave, I was asked, Greg brought up the issue as to whether we should be approving it as policy of the Board before hearing from our attorney, as to whether it conflicted with our negotiated contracts. I will say that we have heard, I, I did contact our attorney, I have heard back. I'm not prepared, unless Michelle is prepared to address it tonight. We did hear back, we will put it on a future agenda. But I did hear back, but I'm just not prepared to address it tonight. But I think it is going to need to be revisited briefly. Greg, is that fair?
Yeah, I think it is fair. It, it, it does appear that there are some concerns that people have, and so.
All right. So we'll move on from that. Item 8, okay. Item 8 was a call for executive session, but I understand that we're not ready for that, so there'll be no executive session tonight.
May I?
Yes.
We have not got the final contract back from the union yet. Still, it's, it's been ratified. It's just going back and forth with language, and it won't be ready till January. We tried to get it done, and I got the call yesterday that it wouldn't be ready for tonight.
Do we want an executive session to discuss the basic terms? We're not talking about language, we're not ready to approve it.
I would rather do it all at once, Greg. Just for those, the Board, we reported at the last meeting that the Board has reached a tentative agreement with the teachers' union on a contract, but we don't have the contract yet. Their lawyers, our lawyer and their negotiator are apparently going back and forth about language. The, from what I'm hearing from the superintendent, the teachers' union has ratified it, but we don't have the contract. I usually don't sign contracts until I have it signed from the union. We don't have it. So when we get it, then we'll be in a position to discuss it and vote on it. All right? Thank you. All right. Is there a motion to adjourn? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all. Have a Merry Christmas, and a Happy Holiday, and whatever else you celebrate, and a Happy New Year. Thank you all for your time.